The only season is here sometime, you know.
The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, June 8th, 2021, is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given this evening by Councilman Mark Katanzright.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings you've given all of us. Thank you for the people who have helped made our life safe over the last year since we've convened as a county council in public like this. It's been well over a year. We ask you, Lord, to continue to bless all of our citizens in our county. Thank you, Lord, for the dedicated, loyal, selfless county servants, our police officers, our paramedics, our firefighters, our clerks, our administrative assistants, our court workers, our clerks, our county health employees, vaccine administrators, the volunteers who've been helping the county. Ask you, Lord, to continue to bless all of those who have made our county safer. Ask you to help us continue to drive through this pandemic. And may we continue to persevere and be resilient and keep in thoughts all of our loved ones who have gone before us. Over 600,000 Americans and several thousand in our own county that have gone before us as a result of this terrible disease. Continue to bless us and may we continue to be able to meet in public as we choose. Or if you're unable to meet in public, may we be able to explore other options to make our meetings possible to you, as we may discuss later on tonight. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Councilman Katanzright. Next on the agenda are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 11th, 2021, public hearing? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes from the May 11th, public hearing are approved. Report from the county auditor?
A report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Report from county commissioners? No report. Report from any council special committees? Hearing none. Next on the agenda, we have first readings. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 6121?
In ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council amending Chapter 92, consumer fireworks restrictions of the St. Joseph County Code. Petitioner Cory Nolan.
Bill Number 6121 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
6321, an ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council amending ordinance blank 20, 2021 salary ordinance for appointed officers and employees for all departments of the county, providing a COVID-19 hazard pay stipend to qualifying county employees, Superior Court employees. Petitioner, Superior Court.
Bill Number 6321 is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee?
Bill 6421, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 land uses, Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 56458 Willow Road, 31917 State Road 2, and 56340 Willow Road, New Carlyle, from A agricultural district to I industrial district. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission.
Bill Number 6421 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill 6521, an ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County public way or public place located at that 735 segment of Nikar Road, the center line of which is the north line of the southeast quarter of Section 20. Township 36 North, Range 3 East, beginning at the northwest corner of the southeast quarter of said section and extending 735 feet east along the north line of the southeast quarter, Section 20, Township 36, Range East. Petitioner, RRG Farms LLC, Bremen, Indiana.
Bill Number 6521 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee? That concludes our first readings for this evening. Next, we have resolutions. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 6221?
6221 is a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council adopting a written policy establishing the procedures for electronic participation at meetings. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Council.
Petitioner?
As I can speak with this, this will allow the council to continue to allow public participation, hopefully along with council participation. We will hopefully after the governor's emergency orders expire at the end of June. This resolution is consistent with the most recent legislative session, which is set for the procedures for public bodies to allow remote meeting access to public and come back to the session.
Thank you, Mr. Triple. Any questions from council? Hearing none. We'll open a public hearing on Bill 6221. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on Bill Number 6221. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 6221 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenreki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 6221 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number 5521?
Resolution determining that the qualifications of an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming resolution number blank of the St. Joseph County Council declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area. Confirming resolution. Petitioner, Unifrax I LLC.
Good evening.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill Number, where we at here? 5521 comes to the full council without a recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening, members of the St. Joseph County Council. Chris Brown with the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the 7th and 11th floors. First off, I'd like to say it's good to see everybody in person again. Doing things over Zoom has been complicated at best, as I'm sure you are all aware. Before you tonight is the confirming resolution for the tax phase in for Unifrax LLC. We've been working with Unifrax for a couple of months now, going through the process of the abatement through St. Joseph County. The, on May, where are we at here? Sorry, I lost all my talking points. As a reminder, this project is a 20 metric ton production line that is going into the existing facility at a cost of around $13 million. There will be 20 new jobs that come with this expansion. Earlier in the process, the county council did hold a public hearing on the declaratory resolution set into place a 10-year economic revitalization area. As a reminder, let's see. Petitioner has worked with Division of Economic Development to work through the tax abatement workbook and the process. We have gone through kind of extensively. They've provided the associated documentation for the add-in points. At that point, Economic Development staff have evaluated the workbook and applicable documentation and are recommending a real property tax phase into five years, which is three years plus two years of add-on at a step down of 10% per year, and then five years of personal property tax abatement on new equipment at 100% over five years. If there are any questions that the council may have, we also have John Thurber, who's a Vice President of Procurement and Business from Unifrax in New York, as well as Steve Rundell, who's the Plant Manager in New Carlyle. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 5521. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in opposition of the bill? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle, Indiana. I object to this abatement as things sit currently. We have a company that they say they're in 32 countries around the world. There's five other sites in the United States they're located in. This is a test program they want to bring in here, a pilot program they want to bring in here. And they're asking for an abatement. Just I get the abatement on the new equipment, the retooling that's going to take place. I understand that. But the abatement on a piece of property that has sat unchanged on the exterior part. They're not expanding the building at all. They're changing stuff inside. They're not, there's nothing changing outside of that building. That abatement is totally unnecessary. And to even also to think about giving the abatement on the new equipment, it should be considered and it should be considered strongly as this person comes and asks for this basically handout that this person has discontinued, his company has discontinued the retirement health benefits of two former employees who now sit without health benefits. They say they brought, they came in line with the rest of the company, with the rest of the corporation. They did this to, I don't know, maybe they, maybe it was a token that they threw in so that they could get this pilot program. I don't know what the purpose was, but it just seems unconscionable to me that you could have someone, my friend in particular, working 40 years, retiring, and then he comes up eligible for Medicare later this year. So to think that they couldn't even offer him or agree to carry him on health benefits until he hits Medicare age, that they're that unwavering? I, it's, I, it's just, you really got to have some gall to say, give me an abatement here. Give me your health benefits here. I, you, this, this abatement has, has to have conditions on it. And they have to meet the, the abatement on the product, on the real property or the existing property. I do not support that. And I would only support the abatement for the retooling purposes if they were to continue these two people's retirement health benefits until they hit Medicare age. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of Bill 5521?
I would, please.
Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Mary Countryman. I live at 52959 Timothy Road, New Carlyle. Can somebody please explain, does this abatement request, does it actually meet requirements for the abatements? For an abatement? And explain all of the requirements? And can you tell me if each of those requirements are met or not met? Thank you.
Not the time to do that? Yeah, we've gone through the, the tax abatement workbook. It's a pretty involved, long document. And the company has provided all the associated documentation. In our eyes, it does meet the abatement requirements for the existing, the three-year base plus a two-year add-on and the personal property.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Betts. I live at 730 Pottage Grove Avenue. I would just like to say it's good to see you all in person again. So welcome back to all of us. I also want to speak against the abatement. I, I won't take long. I concur with Mr. Caruso's points. But I think whether or not the abatement meets the laws of the, or the resolution, the ordinance on tax abatement is a manner of interpretation, I think, especially the real estate part does not. I would also just like to ask all of you to think about how business is done in our county. There's some really exciting movement on the county and the city working together on the issue of homelessness. And I just would like to ask that there also be this kind of thought about whether we're going to continue to subsidize corporations at the expense of taxpayers rather than actually having them pay taxes and then using that money to reinvest in our communities. So I would respectfully ask you to vote no on this abatement. I'm also concerned that the three members who resigned from, I'm sorry, I don't know the proper name of the committee, but the, the Tax Abatement Committee, I don't know if they've ever been replaced yet. And I felt like that was a check and balance on the resolution that you all had to make sure all the rules of abatements were met. So I'd also be curious to know where that process is. Thank you.
In regards to the members of the committee, which was an informal advisory committee, not a decision-making committee, those members have not been replaced and we are in the process of currently evaluating and updating the tax abatement.
Good evening. Christopher Cobb, I live at 215 East Pokagan Street in South Bend, Indiana. It's also good to see you all in person again. Appreciate the, the work of public business being done here. And it's my privilege to be able to participate in that process. I'm also wanting to speak against this, this abatement, at least at the scale proposed. I'd ask the council to weigh carefully the question of what is in the public interest here? And if an abatement would be necessary for a company to be able to afford to do a project that's going to create jobs, then it seems that there may be public interest in enabling that development to go forward. But when a company is expanding for the purposes of increasing their business as, as a for-profit business, it's their right to do that. It's in the public interest that the value of the property is incorporated into the tax base. That's how, that's how we fund what we do is by the property owners who all have a stake in the value of our county contributing their share. And given the way our, our, the local tax levy in Indiana works, if this company isn't paying, isn't paying those property taxes, if the amount of the tax being paid is below the levy, that's going to raise everybody else's taxes. So it's not, it's not just, well, it's a nice thing for this company, but you know it affects everybody else's taxes. So the, the distinction between tax break for the, for the increase in, in equipment that's necessary to make this go, there's a reasonable for them to ask. I think the real estate abatement, why, you know, just, just a giveaway. Why, why would we do that? What is, what is the public interest? If they don't think they're going to make a profit, then they wouldn't be trying to do it. If they don't want to pay taxes, we have, we have provisions in the tax code for 501(c)(3) corporations that don't seek to make a profit and therefore, and therefore aren't taxed. I don't think that there's a need for reducing the tax burden in a very business-friendly state with low tax rates set for everybody. Giving, giving abatements of this kind. And again, and again, you've been asked a number of times in recent years. The more you say yes, the harder it is to say no, and the less, the less resources that the government of our county has to do the public's business and look after the public good. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of Bill Number 5521? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on the bill.
We allowed rebuttal a little bit?
Yes.
So first off, I, I think from, from an expansion standpoint, the property taxes for the facility are still in effect. The abatement is just for the expansion and the equipment. So the rest of the facility is still paying property taxes, still paying personal property taxes. So I just want to make sure that that is clear. Secondly, from, from looking at an economic development standpoint for a business expanding in this area, attraction is an important part of what we've been doing. But expansion is really at the core of developing a diversified economy for, for this area. These, these jobs that are coming in with the potential of future investment, should that product go to market and really take off, could expand that area quite a bit from a diversification of our economy. So you're looking at good-paying jobs. You're looking at creating stability for a company that has been here for 43 years. And we want to keep them here for another 43, if not longer. And so this type of product, especially in a green economy where the lithium-ion battery technology is really going to take off from that EV and consumer electronics standpoint, I think is, is a big win for the county as a whole. And just one other thing, the, the amount of abatements that are in the county right now, this would be the fifth active abatement that we have. When compared to some of the other municipalities around here, five for a county of our size is relatively small. So I just want to make sure that, that, that is clear as well. And then John and, or Steve, if you guys have any comments as well, this would be a good time to present those. Or not?
Maybe, Chris, while we're figuring that out, can I ask just a quick question on the real property piece? So we understand they aren't really adding on to the square footage of the building. Is that correct?
Yep.
But they are making improvements inside the building that are adding to the, the real property assessed value?
Yeah, it's a 13,000 square foot renovation of an existing area within the building. And there, I think there's some stuff on the outside, but most of this internal, most of this work is being done internally.
And only this renovation is the piece that would be abated in terms of the real property?
Yes.
And then all of the personal property being the widget-making devices are going into this newly renovated space? And that's the only piece that we're talking about? Okay.
Yep.
And Chris, council, good evening. John Thurber here on behalf of Unifrax. I was getting a message that the host had to take me off mute, which seems to be resolved now. So apologies for the delay. But in any event, as Chris said, this is really a precursor project for us. It's a 20 metric ton line. We do expect the uptake on this technology to be rapid and quickly grow. And so we believe that we will have an additional 100 metric ton line in play in the very short term. And New Carlyle continues to be an ideal location for us. We've got a current facility there, a talented workforce, and thus far the support both at the state and local level to make an ideal location. Now that said, at this point in time, there's open question marks on customer uptake speed, the geography of where those customers are. And so at this point in time, we're not ready to make that commitment on the 100 metric ton lines. But the, the reality is that New Carlyle is an ideal location. It becomes even more ideal with the approval and to go forward to the 20 metric ton line to get us started off with this technology. And secondly, I, I do just want to correct the record on the retirement benefits. I did submit some supplemental documentation to council. I'm not sure of the, the individual's specific circumstances that were mentioned by Mr. Caruso, but I can tell you for the five individuals that were on that retirement plan, they were grandfathered into that retirement plan and the company will continue to support them. So if there was any confusion around that, we can speak unequivocally that that was the intent to allow those in the program to continue, to, to allow them to continue on the Unifrax program, go off the Unifrax program if they so desired and found a better program for themselves in their particular area and instance. But I just wanted to clarify that because that was not the intent at the time, nor is it. It was simply that we were discontinuing the program for new applicants. And so I just wanted to, to correct the record in additional to the, the commentary on the 100 metric ton line. Thank you.
So this is Steve Rundell. Sorry, I had the same problem as John. I just want to say, I mean, the points have been covered, but this technology is groundbreaking technology. It is a step change in performance of what is going to be our future power sources for everything that we use. And this is a truly exciting opportunity, once-in-a-lifetime type of opportunity to be involved in something like that. And I, I think it would be a real shame if, you know, we let this slip away from the people that work at New Carlyle, the people in the area who can come and help and get involved in that growth, which is almost certainly going to happen at some point. And, you know, away from St. Joan, Indiana. I think it's a great opportunity that people should be, and I would ask the council to really, you know, think about that and support if they can.
Mr. Katanzright?
My question's for Mr. Thurber. I think I asked Mr. Rundell this last time during our committee meeting. Mr. Thurber, can you speak to the 100 metric ton line? Would St. Joseph County be first considered for that expansion should this technology take off like you anticipated to? Or would you be considering other locations like Buffalo, other states? Or are we positioned ideally in this portion of the country to help get your product where it needs to be quickly?
So I, I think New Carlyle would be positioned ideally and will continue to be so with the 20 metric ton line. You know, ideally, these lines stay in close proximity of one another as we look to build the infrastructure and recruit the talent to do so. Now that said, as I mentioned, you know, there's still some uncertainty in terms of how the uptake takes place and where the customers are geographically that really uptake the product here in the initial stages. And so there's still some uncertainty around that. And so cannot commit to a location at this point. But again, going back to my earlier points, it is positioned really well for New Carlyle particularly. We've got the infrastructure there. We would continue to build out, but it is dependent on some question marks that we've got to answer after we get this 20 metric ton line up and running and we see the uptake in the marketplace that we're expecting from customers as we evaluate that geography.
Thank you. Any other questions from council or comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Tullion?
I had a question for Chris Brown. Chris, could you answer Professor Cobb's argument that abatement should be reserved for companies that need the money to bring about an expansion? Whereas here, we already have a company that has the ability to do it without an abatement?
Yeah, so from an economic development standpoint, the fact is, is because this is a national and a global manufacturer, there are other options. There are other areas for this to go. Some of those, so for example, New York State, where Unifrax is headquartered, has no personal property tax whatsoever. So the abatement savings, even if we, you know, if we go with the full 100%, you're looking about, I think, half of that to be saved. In, in New York, where it would be taxed differently, they would have no personal property whatsoever. So what happens is when we are looking at competing against other states, other nations in this global marketplace, you have to find a good way to balance how, you know, we make this site attractive. The lesser that tax benefit sometimes is, the more attractive other sites become. And so it's really kind of a balancing act and with a company this size and with understanding that these projects could go elsewhere, you know, we have to find what that balance is, and for local governments, that is the tax abatement route.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Mr. Kanarecki?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, maybe you can answer this. What, what is the estimated total annual income of the new jobs?
The new jobs, the total annual, I believe, was 1.2 million for the 20. I believe that's the number, it's in and around there. So you're still looking at about $30 an hour for, on average.
Okay. Thank you. I, I was just kind of curious, you know, again, to Mr. Cobb's questions. So in terms of how the levy's impacted, and I'll try not to get too much into the weeds, mostly because I'm ignorant. Adding some assessed value wouldn't necessarily have created new revenue, but increasing payrolls over time actually increases the levy, so might actually create more revenue.
Through income tax?
Well, through income tax, but then also through property tax. Does that seem accurate?
I would defer to Steve on this one.
If you're referring to the levy growth rate, which is, which is calculated using five years of income growth, it's a statewide number. So although it is positive in a large bucket, it is included in all the numbers that are in 92 counties for the statewide five-year average for, for growth in incomes.
So adding new jobs might help, but?
Yep, it's a drop.
Thank you.
Mr. Katanzright?
I just want to address, Mr. Professor Cobb, I respect your opinion, because I don't think I, like anybody else, likes the word tax phase and tax abatement. I don't like to be in, put in the position where we have to consider granting these. However, like Mr. Brown explained, we have to be competitive as a community, as a county, and as a state. And the state legislature has given us these tools, which a lot of other states have tools too to use, to compete for companies in business. And it puts us in an awfully awkward position to have to consider these. A few years back, we had to consider an abatement for a company called General Sheet Metal Works, and that company wanted to relocate, they, they had the option of, they're leaving the city of South Bend, they weren't going to stay in the city of South Bend, they're going to come either into St. Joe County, unincorporated county, or they're going to go to Michigan. And they fought very hard, we had a very contentious debate about that. Ultimately, they ended up deciding to stay here in our county, and we granted them the abatement. Fortunately, I think, they stayed here, they've grown, they've increased their employees, they've expanded their, there's another company locating on the area they developed. And just the other day, I was coming down, what I refer to as the bypass, US 31, and it burns my butt to see two South Bend companies across the state line in Michigan that used to be located in our county that are now in Michigan, because Michigan has, I think, a very lucrative economic benefit package, much like the state of New York, like we're hearing about. These companies that were formerly in our county are now located in Michigan. I think they did that as a result of the competition among states and among communities. So it puts us in a very difficult position, and that's why I think we've been very judicious as a council, the fact that we've only given five out in the last probably 10, 12 years. We don't give them out willy-nilly. It's, it's always a lot of deliberate consideration, whether we're going to give one out or not. But it's unfortunately, an economic development tool that we're forced to use, and it puts us in a tough position. But I think we try to be as judicious as possible and, and look at what the benefits are versus what the cost is. But I appreciate your opinion, and I can respect it.
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Krasinski?
Chris, during the committee meeting, there was brought up about the health insurance, not to keep harping on the health insurance, but there was a couple that worked there for quite a few years that I, I thought that, said that they lost their retiree insurance. I recall, I, I don't recall their name, but is there a way that if I make contact with this couple that through you, maybe you can, with, with John Thurber, you guys can maybe contact these former employees about their health insurance, retiree health insurance benefits?
Yeah, I, I think, John and Steve, if, if that's okay with you, I, I mean, I, I think we just want to make sure that there, there are no misconceptions, there aren't, there's nothing that's going on that, if there was communication errors or what have you. I, I think, I know I'd be happy to do that, but, you know, that is kind of up to the company as well.
That, that's all I'm trying to do, and it's my understanding that they've tried to contact the, the company, and they don't return calls, but you know how that is, you know?
Yeah, John, John Thurber speaking here. We, we'd be happy to look into that, and you can send them to me personally, I'd be happy to address it, because I'd love to make sure that no misunderstanding, or there was not a, a miscommunication of any, any sort. We still are remote to a large degree, so I'm not sure whom they're trying to contact, but you can give them my contact information through Chris, and we'd be happy to address that and make sure we make it right.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then, Chris, I just want to say thank you for all the information that you did send us a few days ago, it was very, very helpful, very thorough, appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments from counsel?
Sorry, Mr. Morton, I had one more.
Mr. Katanzright? Just to be clear, Mr. Brown, when you mentioned to Council McCann and Ricky about the 1.2 million dollars in job expansion, can you be specific, is that primarily, that, that wage amount, is that primarily workforce, blue-collar workers on the assembly line? When you mentioned that $30 per hour wage?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that primarily?
For the most part, I think most of them were relatively technical in nature. So Steve, if you want to jump on real quick, just he's the plant manager, so.
Yeah, sure, I mean, yeah, of, of the, there's 20 jobs, of the 20 jobs, there'll be 13 currently forecast to be operators, operators of the, of the plant, with, you know, a couple of manager and a couple of lab technician positions. So yes, they are, to answer your question, yes, they are mostly blue collar.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none, may I have a motion on Bill 5521?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill Number 5521 was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess, there was a third by Councilman File. Any further comments from any council member on 5521? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 5521 was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
That concludes resolutions. Next, we have, on the agenda, we have salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 4921?
4921, excuse me. An ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner Portage Manor.
Excuse me. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Robin Chaloner, 3016 Portage Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46628. I believe this one is for, I have two on the agenda, so I believe this one is for a position that was vacated in 2020 due to COVID, and we found no reason to replace that person. So the money has been sitting there, this will not increase our budget. But I'm asking to take these funds and reappropriate them to, to other positions. One being our business office manager, who has absorbed a lot of duties with COVID. There's a lot more tracking, also, we've had grants, which is really positive, but it's, it's very labor-intensive. And she also will be helping with duties of ensuring room and board is received correctly to ensure our revenue is, is being met as best we can. And the other one is for our assistant director of nursing. She is a very low-paid nurse, and it is very competitive right now in the nursing field to hire and keep staff. And it's much more cost-effective to keep the staff we have than to hire and train. And beyond that, we have posted a job for a nurse for months and cannot hire someone because of the low wage. So I'm asking that these funds be redirected to these two positions so that we can keep two great employees and pay them a rate that is, is more in line with their job duties.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? Mr. Katanzright?
I just want to apologize, if I did mention the word nurse in my invocation, I meant healthcare workers and nurses and everything you guys do. There are so many things our county employees do, and I truly appreciate Portage Manor, everything you and your employees do. And if I, if I omitted anybody, it was purely a fault of my own, and please know that we care about your nursing staff and your healthcare workers and all that you guys do for the fragile people that live in Portage Manor.
Thank you, we value your work as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nolan?
I just wanted to clarify, I think what you just explained, what you just spoke to was for 5821, which is.
Did I?
Okay, too.
Okay.
That's a jack. I apologize, I don't have the bill numbers on these, so was this the Transpo grant that I was, was up first?
Yeah.
All right, well, with that said, then we'll, we'll vote on 5821 at this point. Any other questions from counsel?
58 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
President Morton didn't either.
We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 5821. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 5821. Do I hear a motion? Your second. Motion to pass Bill Number 5821 was made by Councilman McCann and Ricky, was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 5821 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 4921?
4921? I'll do it again.
Boy, you already read it, so.
But I know, I did it so well, I think it's, we should do it again.
I loved it.
I think so, too. An ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner Portage Manor.
I think you did it better the second time.
They sound very similar. So this, this got sent back to committee, and my apologies for that. On a personal note, my aunt was passing away of COVID, and so I was with her that Tuesday night, and I apologize for, and I appreciate Steve Dalton reminding me last week that I was on the, the agenda, so thank you all for your help through these things. So anyways, this is an operational grant that we applied through Transpo. Transpo, and we were lucky enough to receive that, and so this will offset costs for driver's salary, another dispatch salary, FICA per group health insurance, and vehicle maintenance, and it's at $67,072.98. It is a matching grant, which was already put into our 2021 budget, so this, this is just a great savings for Portage Manor.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel on Bill 4921? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill 4921. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 4921?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve Bill Number 4921 was made by Councilwoman Hess, and it was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 4921 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 5721?
5721, an ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner Health Department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
Mr. President, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, this is Amy Rupee, Administrator for the Department of Health, with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. Before you is a request to transfer the salary amount from one account, Health Educator, to the new appropriate title, Health Promotion Specialist.
Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill 5721. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 5721?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill Number 5721 was made by Councilwoman Hess, it was seconded by Councilman McCann and Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 5721 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 5921?
An ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner Probate Court.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Petitioner?
Cheryl Rush, Controller at the St. Joseph Probate Court, 1000 South Michigan Street. We're requesting this appropriation for supervisor probation in order to pay him the correct, state-mandated salary, and it'll be paid from probation user fees.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 5921. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval, second.
A motion to pass Bill Number 5921 was made by Councilman Katanzright, seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from counsel? Or Councilman Nolan, third by Councilman Krasinski? Kind of simultaneous.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no apology needed. Any further comments from any council member on 5921? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 5921 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda, Bill Number 6021?
An ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner Probate Court.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, sir. Petitioner?
Cheryl Rush, Controller at St. Joseph Probate Court, 1,000 South Michigan. Again, this is same scenario. It's appropriation for probation officer one. We have probation officers with different years of salary.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing now, I'll open the public hearing on Bill 6021. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing now, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 6021?
Move for passage.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill Number 6021 was made by Councilman Canada Ricky. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullioan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 60-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing and public comments on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our May 25, 2021 committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing now, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing now, public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 5621?
An ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
May I have a motion on Bill Number 5621?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass Bill Number 5621 was made by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Canada Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullioan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 5621 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda, land use. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 4021?
Forty-two twenty-one, an ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County, public way or public place located at that 243-foot section of Bristol Street by the southern right of way line of Edison Road to the north, Lot 55 of Elm Grove Addition to the west, and Lot 54 Elm Grove Addition to the east, Portage Township, St. Joseph County, Section 6, Township 37 North Range 2 East, petitioner Michael Denman of Edison Road.
Good evening. This is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission Staff with offices on the 11th floor of the County City Building. This is a petition to vacate a short street right-of-way that begins at Edison Road, about 600 feet east of Pine Road, and then runs 243 feet south, entirely adjacent to the petitioner's property. The staff finds that the vacation would not hinder the growth or orderly development of this area. Should those industrial properties between Edison and Ardmore Trail develop in the future and need access to Edison Road, we also have that unimproved right-of-way to the east there, which would provide better access and runs entirely to Ardmore Road. We find that the vacation would not make access to the lands of any persons by means of public way difficult or inconvenient. There are only four parcels that have bought this short right-of-way, two of which front on Edison Road, one which fronts on Ardmore Trail and Pine, and one which fronts on Ardmore Trail and Edison. The vacation would not hinder the public's access to a church, school, or other public building or place, and it would also not hinder the use of a public way by the neighborhood in which it is located. As such, we support this vacation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and the petitioner is also on the line if you have any questions for him.
Any questions from council for area plan?
Just one.
Mr. Nolan?
Bill Number 40-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I was just going to ask you that. I was just going to ask that, Mr. Nolan. But thank you, though. No, he was too quick. No, I was... No, I'm not sleeping. Okay, all right.
It's my fault.
Yeah, I was just going to say you just jumped in. No, just kidding. Just kidding. Any questions from council? Mr. Katanzarite?
Sorry, Mr. Klein, I'm not familiar exactly where this is. I just know the general area. Is this anywhere near where South Shore is looking at to expand in the future or consider relocating the airport terminal? Does that affect any of that area?
I did consult with economic development when this came in, and it was not in either of those areas from what they informed me, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for area plans? Hearing now, petitioner? Mr. Denman, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I don't really have any comments or questions.
Any other questions from council? Hearing now, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 4021. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 4021. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill Number 4021 was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments on Bill 4021 from council? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullioan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 4021 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 5321?
5321, an ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by Warren Township for property being located at 25698 State Road 2, petitioner Warren Township.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill Number 53-20 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Abby Wiles, Area Plan Commission, with offices on the 7th and 11th floor of the County City Building. Not to beat a dead horse, but just to give everyone, bring everyone up to speed in case we have new folks joining this evening. Both of the requests that we have before you are special uses. They're not rezonings. Special uses are reviewed by the Area Board of Zoning Appeals and then come to the County Council for a final vote, which is why we didn't post signage, although both petitions were noticed per state code requirements, which we specify in our bylaws as 600 notice to property owners within 660 feet and a legal notice. So the petition, before you write at this moment, is a public service use or fire station. It's the Warren Township Fire Station at the corner of Peach and Grant Road. It is on property owned by the Southend Motor Speedway. However, it will be... Sorry. If approved, it would be subdivided off into its own five-acre parcel. It's zoned single-family. Fire stations are a special use in the single-family district.
It's not your problem. Somebody's got their microphone on.
Okay, sorry.
B Kane is not muted.
All right. This is a view of the property looking east and a view of the property looking west. Another view. As I mentioned previously, if approved, it would be subdivided onto its own parcel. I believe that this has... This project has already been through tech review in that engineering, surveying, planning, and health have provided comments, but it hasn't been through the formal subdivision process. It's my understanding that it's scheduled for June 17. And then, as I mentioned at the committee meeting, all commercial and industrial projects go through a process called plan review that's coordinated by the Building Department. If the special use is approved, it'll proceed through the subdivision and through plan review, at which time all of the reviewing agencies would have the opportunity to make comments. I want to address a couple of questions that came up at committee meeting. We sent you all some additional information on both special use petitions. There were some questions regarding there being sufficient space turning out of the building to... or for fire trucks leaving the building, turning right onto Grant to get onto Peach Road. I contacted Sky Medders, County Engineer, and his response was that we typically require at least 150 feet from the intersection, measured from the stop bar, location of the roadway to the closest radius as part of the drive. Again, that will be addressed as part of plan review. There was also a question raised regarding if indot and/or the county would require any improvements to the intersection of Peach and State Road 2, and Sky's response was that this would be entirely up to indot, and they'd... They, the petitioner, would have to coordinate to make sure that their concerns were addressed. And then, just to recap, the comments that were received at the ABZA hearing, because I know that was asked at the county... at the committee meeting, there was one letter received that did not have an issue with the fire station, one call prior to the hearing that opposed the fire station, and then there was one person on Zoom who had submitted a couple of questions during the ABZA hearing, and the draft ABZA minutes reflecting all of this were shared with you yesterday. All right. So moving on, the approval of a special use is outlined in our zoning ordinance, which is from Indiana Code, that the proposed use wouldn't be injurious to the public health, safety, community moral standards, convenience, general welfare. Again, this is an institutional use like churches and schools permitted within single-family district. Won't adverse... It won't injure or adversely affect the use of the area adjacent. This is going to meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Landscaping along the north and the east property line will be required because of the residential zoning in close proximity. Proposed use will be consistent with the character of the district in which it's located, and the proposed use is compatible with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Area Plan Commission rec... or, excuse me, Area Board of Zoning Appeals recommendation was favorable 5-2.
Any questions from council? Thank you. Petitioner?
Hi, this is Brian Kane. I'm speaking on behalf of Brian Blight, the petitioner.
Go ahead, sir.
And I'm just available if you have any question... additional questions.
Any other questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing now, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 5321. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 5321. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass Bill Number 5321 was made by Councilman Krasinski, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess and Councilman Nolan. Any... simultaneously, that's exactly. You took the words out of my mouth. That's exactly what it was. Any further comments on Bill 5321? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullioan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
And Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 5321 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 5421?
5421, an ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by Matthew and Rebecca Gerard for property being located at 21890 Pine Hollow Lane, the same being filed with the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, petitioner Matthew and Rebecca Gerard.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill Number 54-21 comes to the full council without a recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission Staff with offices on the 11th floor of the County City Building. Based on information provided by the applicant on the special use application, his intent is to conduct a small number of firearm transfers on the property shown here, zoned our single-family district. These are to be conducted to a limited customer base. There's to be no change in outside appearance or signage. Of course, there'll be no firearm discharge on the property, and the applicant has simultaneously filed the paperwork to pursue a federal firearm license from the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. In our zoning ordinance for this particular special use, there are three additional criteria that gun sales must meet in order to be approved. It must be 200 feet from any public or parochial K through 12 school, any childcare center, or any childcare ministry. In the slide there, you see where the 200-foot radius gets you as far as the parcels. Each of these contain a single-family home, other than the large vacant one there. So there are no public or parochial schools to worry about. Additionally, based on our records from the past three years, none of these single-family homes contains a home-based daycare that has been licensed with the state of Indiana, and these licenses need to be renewed every two years. So it does meet these specific development standards. When this went before the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, staff made these... a recommendation of the following proposed written commitments, which are really aimed at mitigating any of the adverse effects that this might have on a residential neighborhood. These are based on our development standards for home occupations, which allow other types of goods to be sold from single-family homes zoned our single-family, as well as the last one there comes from a gun sale special use that was approved for in our single-family property in 2011. So the written commitments we propose were that there shall be no outside storage associated with the business, that there's no change in outside appearance of the building or premises, and that there's no sign other than what is permitted in the sign section. All activities related to the home occupation shall be conducted within the dwelling. There's to be no commercial or industrial-grade equipment installed. The property shall have no employees related to this business. Deliveries and outgoing shipments related to the home occupation shall not be transported on vehicles larger than those customarily used to deliver to a residence. The business shall serve no more than one on-premise customer at a time, and services related to the special use shall not be advertised to the general public using the address of the property. Just to reiterate, there are these four criteria found in state law that you're to take into account when you're determining whether to grant a special use. The proposed use should not be injurious to public health, safety, community moral standards, convenience, or general welfare. The proposed use will not injure or adversely affect the use of adjacent area or property values therein. The proposed use will be consistent with the character of the district in which it is located, and the proposed use is compatible with the recommendations of the St. Joseph County Comprehensive Plan. Prior to the Area Board of Zoning Appeals public hearing, we did receive four letters of... in remonstrance for this special use petition and one request for additional information. During the public hearing itself, there were 11 comments in remonstrance, nine comments in support, and seven questions. Some of the shared concerns in the remonstrance were that this usage is not appropriate for a residential neighborhood. Although there is not a preschool within the 200 feet prescribed in the development standards, there is one within 400 feet. There were some safety concerns related to increased traffic, lack of sidewalks, and children playing in the neighborhood. Also, concerns with the special use staying with the property after the current... should the current owner ever move. Also, concern that the business will grow beyond what is being proposed here, and of course, enforcement issues related to the written commitments. Ultimately, the Area Board of Zoning Appeals did this... send this to the County Council with a favorable recommendation, subject to those eight written commitments that were proposed by staff. The vote on this was five to two. There were some additional questions that came out of committee that I wanted to address quickly. We did have a discussion as to... We did have a discussion as to whether we could put some sort of restriction as to the type of firearms that could be sold on the property, that we could essentially tailor this federal license in how we saw fit. It's actually a type 1 federal firearms license that cannot be altered or tailored in any way, and this would enable the petitioner to sell any firearms that are not covered by the National Firearms Act, which, that's where you get into fully automatic silencers, shortened barrels, that sort of thing. But what's important to keep in mind there is that once the petitioner receives this type 1 license, they can apply for a special occupational tax that would allow them to sell that type of weaponry, and in this case, the ATF would not inform local zoning of the application or the approval thereof. And I believe that's everything we discussed. I'm happy to answer any questions. The petitioner is also here to answer questions as well.
Mr. Katanzright?
Do you have those rate, eight written commitments? Did you mention those, or did you, are those the ones where you talked about not being located within?
Those are the development standards that need to be met. These are the eight written commitments that we proposed.
Did the petitioner read those?
Yes.
Any other questions from council for Area Plan? Hearing none, petitioner?
Good evening, my name is Matthew Gerard, my address is 21890 Pine Hollow Lane, South Bend, Indiana, 46628. I'm a career firefighter, paramedic for the city of Elkhart. I'm a husband and a father of five children. I'm in my eighth year as a career fireman with the city. I'm here before the council to request special use for my home. This is a requirement by the federal government for me to be granted my federal firearms license. Excuse me. I believe that the Verbiage Gun Shop has misled a lot of people to, to misunderstand that I'm going to have a storefront gun shop in my home where I'm carrying inventory like Midwest Gun Exchange does. I don't intend to do that. The things that I'm going to be doing are for friends and family members that I trust in my home, that I would have over for a barbecue, have over for dinner, my, my mother, my sister, my brother-in-law. I can say with the utmost confidence that my business will not infringe upon the rights of my neighbors, granting of my special use will not negatively affect any of my neighboring property owners or their quality of life. Property values will not be impacted in a negative way as a result of the special use being approved. The safety of our neighborhood will remain as it is now, if not increased. This is my home where my family resides, and my small children, the youngest of which is under three years old. My kids play in the street, I understand that some people were concerned about increased traffic. I assure you, I cannot compete with the Amazon deliveries that are coming into our neighborhood. We're all so to blame for the Amazon trucks. I would be willing to go on record tonight to agree that there will be no fully automatic weapons sold at the premises. I will go on record to say that I will not pursue a special occupational tax that would allow me to sell or transfer short-barrel rifles, short-barrel shotguns, silencers, or fully auto weapons. Additionally, if it weren't for the necessity of the special use, my neighbors would likely have never known the nature of my business or what I was doing, unless they knew about guns and wanted to purchase one and have it transferred to them. The federal firearms license is a license issued by the US government, by the ATF, the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives Bureau, so that I can transfer serialized firearm parts. Anything with a serial number on it has to be tracked by the ATF in case it's used in a crime. So basically, as an FFL, you're an extension of the federal government to keep track of firearms in case they're used in a crime, so you can, you can piece it together so they know where they've gone. So you can say it left me, it went to this person, then they go ask that person, and so on. There'll be very little inventory held on site. There will be no, no changes to the exterior of the structure for business use, no outbuildings erected for business use, no advertisement of any kind bringing in, increase traffic into the neighborhood. The likelihood of more than one or two customers visiting my home per week is, is extremely unlikely, again, all of which would be friends and family. I have no employees that would require additional parking spaces, will not be adding any parking structures or parking lots to the property, I will have little waste produced by my business, none of it being hazardous material. Additionally, no hazardous materials or explosive gases will be utilized for my business, therefore eliminating the possibility of spills or runoff. I will have no loud noise producing machinery or tools in use that will cause disruptions to my neighbors or their quality of life. There will be no smoke, foul odors, or noxious gases produced by my business that would cause any air quality degradation for those nearby. Any firearms that would be on the property would be securely stored in a manner that meets or exceeds the ATF's requirements for a federal firearms licensee. These storage requirements should satisfy any reasonable person's expectations. There will be no discharging of firearms near or on my properties, that would be highly irresponsible and illegal. I'd be happy to agree to the stipulation that my special use permit is non-transferable to the next owner of the property, or I can request that it be revoked shall, should I move and sell the property. As I've noticed, that being a cause for concern for some folks when they've, they've brought it up. I've spoke with people on the Nextdoor app, we've had some, some back and forth, things like that, and cleared things up for a lot of people. There were a lot of people that were like, you're opening a gun store in the neighborhood? And that is not what I'm doing. So I'd like that to, to be, to be brought to attention that, that I'm not opening a inventory-holding gun store in my neighborhood. That is all.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Mr. Krasinski?
Mr. Gerard, during the committee meeting, it was
What?
Those things that I signed, those sheets, you know, when I go to these diecast shows? You know where those are at?
I'll look for them later, I don't
Back during the committee meeting, it was brought up about ammunition, are you going to store ammunition by chance?
Just, just that for my personal use. And it's stored in a fire safe, fireproof safe.
And security system, I think you indicated that you did not have a security
I do not currently, but I'm piecing one together that will integrate into my security cameras at my home, so that way it will be all incorporated into one system that I can operate via app or online, and that's monitored 24/7.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Hess?
You said you wouldn't be carrying, you wouldn't be an inventory-carrying store, which I understand that, but you did say that you would have very little inventory. Could you define what very little inventory looks like?
I have to enter my own firearms, my personal firearms, into an acquisition and disposition log as required by the ATF as a federal firearms licensee. So they would be considered on-hand inventory, but there would be very little aside from that.
And as far as deliveries of the guns to your home, there would be somebody there to accept those deliveries, or they'd be left outside like an Amazon delivery?
No, ma'am, they would, they would have to be signed for by an adult, and all firearms need to be shipped overnight via FedEx or UPS, they're the only ones that will do it, the USPS will not.
Thank you.
Mr. Katanzright?
Do you currently have an Indiana personal carry permit?
Yes, sir.
You've undergone a San Diego County Police background check, I presume?
Correct.
I have as well.
You do too, okay. And that, getting back to Ms. Hess's question, an adult has to sign for those packages as they arrive, correct?
Correct.
In person?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennerackey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gerard, you've done a really wonderful job making your case. Why?
Why?
And you don't even really have to answer this, I suppose, but, but why, why are you interested in doing this?
Well, I, I'm a firearms hobbyist, I enjoy target shooting as a main thing, do a little bit of hand-loading for accuracy things to get out to shooting longer-range rifles and things like that. As an FFL, you have to have business intent, otherwise they will not give it to you. So I've started an LLC, I have a DBA, I got t-shirts and hats and stickers and all kinds of stuff, so it's just something that I enjoy doing. There's a very high demand right now in the firearms market, it could be an opportunity for me to provide a little bit more income for my family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from any council member on Bill number 5421? Mr. Katanzright?
Sorry, should have mentioned this earlier, Mr. Morton, I was thinking with this whole in-person thing, but I know this isn't the first one of these permits or special uses we've considered, and I don't, I don't know if Area Plan has the data, but I know we've had, over the years, three, four, maybe five people come to us. Do you guys have any data on that, Abby or Sean, or?
I have information from the ATF's website for active FFLs in St. Joseph County, which they're in the upper 30s, seven of which are home-based in single-family zoned areas. Based on the research that I've done further into that with crime statistics, nothing has increased in those areas surrounding those locations. I have the addresses here if anyone's interested and
Thanks for doing that, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And that's what I was going to say, I think we've approved these over the years, and we've considered them very judiciously, you know, we didn't just willingly give them out. I don't think we've ever had a complaint or a concern arise after they've been granted, and I think we've had pretty, really good success with granting these and not having any repercussions afterwards. Like Mr. Kennerackey said, I agree, I think you guys have done your homework and done a good job in your presentation, and
Thank you.
We'll consider your matter tonight.
Mr. Krasinski?
I believe Sean, Sean, do you have something to add to this?
I do, as far as special uses go for properties that are kind of analogous to this, being our single-family within a residential subdivision, there were three that have been granted since 2011. The 2011 one was for gun sales transfers, very similar to this, that's on Green Tree. The other two were for ceramic coating only and engraving only, so not necessarily as analogous, but the Green Tree one is very similar to what's before us today, and it was granted subject to some written commitments, similar to those we are considering tonight.
Thank you.
I guess I do have one more question from the board. So back to what Mr. Kennerackey said, why? So I, I say I'm in the market for a firearm, I contact you, so am I going to have to come to your home, or is this transaction going to take place between you and I, you'll order it, and will be drop shipped to my residence?
No, sir, it has to take place at the premises that the FFL is licensed for.
Okay.
So those would have to take place at my home.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council on Bill 5421? Hearing none, we'll open a public hearing on the bill. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Edward Williams, 22150 Pine Hollow Lane.
Go ahead, so you have three minutes to address the council?
I don't need three minutes, I'm in favor. If this gentleman can get his, get this pass, the special, the special property license, I'm, I'm happy for it, I'm all in favor.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of Bill 5421?
I would, Joe Regulinski?
Please state your name and address, for the record, you have three minutes to address the council.
Joe Regulinski, 21916 Pine Hollow Lane, I am Matt Gerard's neighbor, and me and my wife Julie have no problem with this and in favor of passing this.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of Bill 5421?
Yeah, Rich Lane.
Please state your name and address, for the record, you have three minutes to address the council.
Yeah, Rich Lane, 51061 O'Callough Lane, I'm in favor of this, we're very supportive of his idea and hope that it passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dave McAllister, 21858 East Sandy Hill Lane, four doors down from the Gerards. I'm a husband and father as well, so I, my, my child plays in the street, you know, so security is a big thing, so security and safety, I think one of the big things that the Gerards hit home is they promise to, one at a time, one at a time, there's going to be no hazardous materials, anything like that, no sound, nothing else going on, and the biggest thing is that they're, I'm fully confident they're intent to deal with close friends and family that they trust around their own children, and I think that's a testament to what the intent of, of the business is. I think for anybody to notice this business existing in the neighborhood would require some pretty in-depth surveillance, I don't think it'll even be noticed by anybody other than that are watching this night or gotten the letters, I don't think it'll be a disruption or interruption in the neighborhood or a cost for safety or security.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of Bill 5421? Hearing none, is there anyone, anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of Bill 5421? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on the bill. May I have a motion?
Mr. President, can I ask one?
Mr. Kennerackey?
Thank you. This would be for Area Plan, I think. What is our capacity to rescind a special use? And we, we've put these written commitments up here, and Mr. Gerard's agreed to them, and even some additional ones, but if we were to find that they aren't being met, what's our recourse?
It's my understanding, and Abby can correct me, that it could be removed through a motion by this council in the future.
Yeah, sorry, Sean.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, we had, we had this question come up at ABZA, so we confirmed with council. The first action would be if we were made aware of any violation of the commitments, Area Plan staff would need to enforce as we would a typical zoning violation, and if the issue persisted, then we would bring a request back to council to, for you to revoke it, but it would actually be you who would revoke the special use.
Do you have to bring that request before council, or could we petition ourselves?
Mr. Triple?
We did one recently in the city of Elkhart, saying that you would revoke the special use.
Not, not, not
You could do it on your own, we finished it.
Okay. Not to suggest that you guys would ever be negligent in your duties.
We're good.
Thank you.
Good question, thanks.
Mr. Morton? Question for Mr. Triple, so the written commitments that ABZA had them commit to the eight, and the other ones that Mr. Gerard mentioned tonight, can those be incorporated into this motion if it were to pass tonight?
The non-representations made during the committee minutes can be
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, may I have a motion on Bill 54? Mr. Krasinski?
Mr. Morton, I, I came here this evening, since this is in my district, I came here this evening with the intention of voting against this, but after listening to Mr. Gerard and some additional written commitments, and, and during the BZA meeting, there was, Abby, correct me, there were, what, eight or 10 people that spoke against it, and they didn't show up for, you know, public comment tonight, so there must not be too many people with some concerns in regards to this, even though I still have some, but I trust Mr. Gerard and his wife that you'll live up to the commitments and, and, but, and hearing about the special use, that we can revoke that. I guess I'm going to make a motion to support the special use.
Second? Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 5421, was made by Councilman Krasinski, it was seconded by Councilman Nolan, and a third was made by Councilman Kennerackey. Any further comments on Bill 5421?
Could we clarify what written commitments we're going with, just for my benefit? So the eight that were proposed, and then I think, based on our discussion, we want one suggesting that he, Mr. Gerard not sell any firearms that are subject to the National Firearms Act, is that fair?
Yes, sir.
And that the special use ends with the property ownership?
Okay, perfect.
Does that include the special occupational tax that allows the sale of the short, the silencers?
Yeah.
Shortened handguns or rifles?
You got the, if the property transfer is also right, you got that?
Yep.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Hess?
Hi. I don't doubt your personal character, so please don't take it this way, but I do have some concerns about firearms being brought into a subdivision of a neighborhood. I know we aren't hearing from remonstrators tonight, but I'm not sure how many people in the neighborhood do know or, you know, feel comfortable speaking up, but nonetheless, it's no aspersion against your character. I don't doubt that, but I'm not going to be able to support that tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments from any council member on 5421?
I'll be driving through the neighborhood.
That makes me even more scared.
Don't allow that.
Any further comments from any council member on 5421? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File? He's on mute. Unleash him.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. File.
You bet.
Ms. Hess?
No.
Okay. Mr. Tullin?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarit?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Grzesinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight and one.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 5421 was passed by a vote of eight to one. Next.
I'm so sorry. I just know from our hearing at the Area Board of Zoning Appeals that people were writing in, and I was having trouble reading the chat. I think that one of the remonstrators, or that someone did submit a comment in remonstration on Zoom.
I just saw a comment from Mr. Williams that said, let me repeat it, said, "Let the man have his FFL." I don't know if that was the-
That was positive.
That was a positive, yeah.
No, there's one right above it. If this passes, will every-
That's about the baby.
Oh, never mind.
Great. All right. I just, I-
We're good.
You know, I'm sorry to take up time, but we just had a lot coming at us during the Area Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, didn't want to make sure, I don't want to make sure nothing was missed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Next on the-
Just as, like, clarifying, and Mr. Triple is probably the best to answer this, but with the resolution that we passed, wherever these public meetings, that chat is not going to count. It has to be seen and heard.
Correct.
To attend, and that would be the public as well.
Correct.
Right into that chat. The chats there to talk to the administrator that, hey, I need to get unmuted or something like that, but comments and vote, or not votes, comments and things like that wouldn't be considered, just-
I appreciate that clarification. No, I appreciate that clarification. That's a very important point. Next on the miscellaneous, we have bill number 5221. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
In order to submitting a supplementing appendix, schedule of fines and fees for the St. Joseph County Health Department, petitioner, Health Department.
Mr. Grzesinski, come in and report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yes, we are requesting to increase some of our fees, so they are in-
Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry. Amy Rupi, Administrator for the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. We are asking to increase some of our nursing fees, so we are in line with what we are being charged from VaxCare, who we get our vaccines from.
Thank you. Any comments from any council member for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on bill 5221. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on 5221. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass bill number 5221 was made by Councilman Katanzarit. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullin?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarit?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Grzesinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine and zero.
Let the record show that bill number 5221 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Next, new business, Mr. Dalton?
All right. It would call, each year we do abatement compliances, reviews. We only have two. We looked at them at committee. One is Pulliam Enterprises. It's real property only. I put it up on the screen in case you need to look at it. It's hard to see, I'm sure, from the side over here. I, I didn't do that. I didn't even have a chance to break that. Yeah, you're right. So I'm recommending approval. We received all the documents. We received all the documents on time, and they have hired more people than they committed. They committed five, they've hired 12. So I recommend approval of the Pulliam Enterprises CF-1, which we require that your president to sign the CF-1, so he's asking for your approval to do so. Do you want me to pause and do these one at a time so that you can vote on them individually? Okay. I will pause.
If we could see him, we'd vote.
You know, Bobby, you could walk over there. Mr. President, this is where I'll pause on Pulliam Enterprises and ask that you get a motion from your colleague so that you will sign the CF-1 on this recommendation.
Do I have a motion to allow me to sign for Pulliam Enterprises? Wait a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm going to flip to the second one. This is the Energy Center. They committed 20 jobs. They've created 21. They filed their documents on time. They invested more than they committed, actually $100 million more than they committed in personal property. I believe that's because there was cost overruns on the electrical contracts. Is that the case, Cory? I recommend approval of the St. Joe Energy Center CF-1 and would agree to a motion from one of you to give the president the chance to sign this CF-1 as well.
Wait a second?
Was there a question, Mark?
I have a question.
Okay.
So when there is a cost overrun compared to what they committed to initially, does that become part of that abatement?
Yeah.
The cost overrun, or does that outside of the-
It becomes both part of their assessed value and part of their abatement, because their abatement was given by percentage.
Okay.
So they're assessed higher, and then that represent a larger percentage as well. 15% of a bigger number is 15% of a bigger number.
But we also have no taxes?
They do.
Thank you.
And personal property self-reporting, so they're giving us $100 million more number. We didn't find it for them. Rosemary is not climbing through that facility looking for that extra. I have no idea. I'm not dismerching anybody's character. I don't remember where you left off, but that's all I have, two.
Next on the agenda is-
That's where you left off.
All in favor?
Aye.
About that, opposed? Thank you for that. Next on the agenda is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes, on any item not on tonight's agenda.
Hi, Jennifer Betts, 7:30 Cottage Grove Avenue. It's really just a question about how much time, I've been struggling to get, I guess I'm curious about how much time the packet should go to the public before the county council meeting?
The agenda and packet?
Yes. The packet that you all read with all the details.
Mr. Triple?
There is no legal obligation to provide that any more than what we do now, which is what? Thursday before the meetings, there's an agenda support? There's no requirement in Indiana code to have an agenda. We have to advertise certain expenditures, but there is no law with you two.
I'm sorry, when you say the agenda, is that the, because I think of the agenda and the packet differently. And is it just the agenda, or is it also the packet?
I don't know what you're referencing, but the, anything that's under first readings tonight should give you a heads up what's going to be heard in the committee, and what's